I tell you.
It was a great conversation.
All right, for the birthday of Mr. Perry Bell Giattisati, please keep all self-employed or on vibrate, please remain standing for the prayer and the flames of the ladies, thank you.
I call the county commission due order, I'll now turn it over to Mr. James Hines for our indication of play.
Thank you, Mr. Rell. Tonight we have Pastor John Templeton for our indications from First Baptist Church.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you so much for this day, God, we thank you for your many blessings, we thank you for this time of year, we celebrate the birth of our Savior, God, I pray that in the hustle and bustle of everything we've got going on, God, that we take time to remember the reason that we celebrate Christmas. God, I thank you for each of these men and women here tonight, God, do a business on behalf of our county, God, I pray blessings over them and their family, God, I pray blessings over this meeting tonight, God, reproductive meeting, God, that you would be in the meeting, and we just thank you for Jesus who died and gave his life for us to have a relationship with you. God, do this tonight, bless this town, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
For the place tonight, we have First Staff Sergeant, Mr. Ron Horton, he started his career as Marine in February nineteen seventy in San Diego, California, at Camp Pendleton. After school, he went to Camp Lejeune, North Carolina, from there, he went to the Marine barracks at Quonset Point, Rhode Island. He left there in August of nineteen seventy-three as a sergeant for Okinawa, Japan, he returned to Camp Pendleton on December twenty-eighth nineteen seventy-six and reported to the Marine Corps Recruitment Depot at San Diego for drill instructor school. He left the drill field in August of seventy-eight to return to Camp Pendleton. In seventy-nine, he was sent to Cherry Point, North Carolina, while there, in the fall of nineteen eighty, he participated in a joint NATO exercise in Mooreway. In nineteen eighty-two, he was sent back to Okinawa and returned in January of eighty-three to train the reserves in Green Bay, Wisconsin. In nineteen eighty-seven, he was promoted to First Sergeant and transferred to Quantico to work in the company of Marine Corps Officer Candidates. In eighty-nine, he was transferred to Hawaii and retired from the Marine Barracks at Pearl Harbor, Hawaii in March of nineteen ninety-two. Mr. Horton moved to Tennessee in twenty-twelve and later to Warren County where he met and married his wife, Evelyn Dunlop. Since having been here, he has volunteered with several community organizations, he attended the McGinnell Civilian Police Academy in twenty-fifteen and was accepted into the Public Safety Unit. He's a member of the Marine Corps League here, where they work with lots of people in the community and different organizations. He assisted with one of the tiny homes across Berry Point and also helped a local Eagle Scout with his project, and he has served in several of the schools in our school system here. He's going to lead us in our pledge tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here.
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 Scott Kelly.
Here.
Here.
Terry Martin.
Here.
Keith Goffin.
Here.
Emma Gummey.
Here.
Amy Williams.
Gary Brager.
Here.
Chris Whittie.
Here.
Christie Ross.
Here.
Scott Rupert.
Here.
Tony Savage.
Here.
Donna Smith.
Here.
Colton Taylor.
Here.
We have twenty-three present tonight, we'll move on to the adoption of redocket. Motion to the docket. Motion by Mr. Bell, Secretary of the Redocket.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to amend the docket tonight, if you all will look, you will have a copy, which will be item number one of GFY twenty-three twenty-four dash twenty. There was a coding error on the original amendment in your packet, and I make a motion that remove that one and add the correct.
Second motion by Mr. Rell, second by Mr. Carter, he's just a error as a numbers. All those in favor of amended the docket, say aye. All those opposed, now we're back on our original document for tonight, defend amendment, all those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, as you know, we'll now have the reading of the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion, we dispense the reading, accept my first reading.
Motion by Mr. Anglin, the second by Mr. Savage, any discussion on this? Being none, all those in favor, say aye. All opposed. All right, if we have any public comment, two things, it's on the docket, it has to be on the docket for you to have public comment, you may sign up Mr. Hillis while we're doing our reports. We'll move on to our EMS report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen on the court, any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer.
Second, motion by Mr. Lee, the second. Got a motion to the second, any questions from Mr. Dean? Being none, all those in favor, say aye. All opposed, as you know, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll now move on to UT Extension.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, ladies and gentlemen on the court, you should have a copy of the quarterly report for UT issue extension, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer those at this time.
Motion to the docket. Got a motion by Mr. Bowman, second by Mr. Staff, any questions about the UT Extension report? Being none, all those in favor, say aye. All opposed, as you know, thank you.
Thank you.
Now the EMS report, Mr. Jim Cunningham.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, you have my report, if you have any questions, I answer them at this time.
Got a motion by Mr. Lee, the second by Mr. Bellina, he may have any questions about the EMS report. Being none, all those in favor, say aye. All opposed, as you know, thank you. We'll move on to finance department, Mr. Coppel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen on the court, you have my report, I'll do my best to answer any questions at this time.
Motion to approve. Got a motion by Mr. Taylor.
Second.
Second by Mr. Rell, any questions about our financial report tonight? Being none, all those in favor, say aye. All opposed, as you know, thank you. We'll move on to our Warren County Memorial Air Court Report, Mr. Jim Coppel.
Good evening and Merry Christmas to you all, you have my report, are there any questions?
Got a motion by Mr. Dodson, second by Mr. Hillis, any questions about the Air Court Report? Being none, all those in favor, say aye. All opposed, as you know, thank you. We'll move on to Mark Lawland, VSO, quarterly report.
Chairman, members of the court, you have my report, any questions I can answer for you?
Motion to approve. Got a motion by Mr. Bell, second by Mr. Staff, any questions for the VSO report? Being none, all those in favor, say aye. All opposed, as you know, thank you. Now, Mr. Cole Miller, the Code's Department.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen on the court, you got my reports, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them at this time.
Motion to approve. Got a motion by Mr. Savage, second by Mr. Moppe, anybody got any questions?
Got a question, how's it coming on some of the people that you've served through Warren County?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
How's it coming on some of the people that you've had served?
So, we rolled out last Monday, hold on, let me think about it, it was definitely last week, but it was Monday, I think so, we served, I think it was eleven more properties that need to be cleaned up in the county, construction's slowing down, so we have a little bit more time to focus on some of these environmental codes, we're getting some of these stuff moved through the court now, I'm learning the process, for specifically the ones that you might be asking about, we're ready, they've got probably another week, and this man right here behind me is going to be getting a phone call from me, and we'll be going the whole nine yards with him.
I got a question for Cole. The other day, you know where-
I like to talk now, so don't get me started.
The other day, I asked you, and there are several people in the audience that are here concerned with the chicken houses that have come in, and it interfered with the communities, but I asked you about, did you have any, so tell me what you told, tell them what you told me about the regulations on the chicken house.
So, there's a couple things, number one, we have no zoning in this county, we can't tell people, without zoning, we can't tell you whether or not you can have a chicken house, and, you know, whether I'm for or against chicken houses, my hands are tied in that aspect, we can't tell you, you can't build it. Now, as far as the smell, there's nothing we can do about that either, I mean, the chicken houses, they're going to smell, we have no zoning, so they can have their chicken houses. Now, I've been told that, you know, some of these chicken houses might have chickens outside being composting, and I've been told by the UT, I can't think of his job title off the top of my head, anyway, power of the people say that, that as long as they're composting, there's three ways of getting rid of chickens out of them chicken barns, once, you know, the cleanup started, they can compost them, they can haul them off, or they can put them in an incinerator, so they can literally stick them outside in a pile and compost them in the dirt, there's nothing we can do about it. So, with that being said, unless this court wants to have a different conversation about moving forward with some zoning, there's really nothing that the county has in writing anywhere that says whether or not we can stop them.
But the zoning is, if you zone it residential, then there's no agriculture.
It's a double-edged sword, I mean, I think, we're running into a problem in this county that things are going on in this county that's, you know, historically not been something that we got, you know, around, you know, chicken barns are moving in, you know, by the masses, construction's booming, some more subdivisions are being talked about than ever before, and really and truly, you know, our way of doing things, it either has to change or we're just going to have to be okay with it happening, and that's just the way I see it, I mean, there's nothing in writing that says, you know, you can't have a chicken barn. Now, if we wanted to go down the zoning route and say, hey, you know, we're going to try to at least, you know, make some stipulations similar to our Junkyard Act, you know, to where, in order for it to be signed off on, you know, we have certain guidelines you need to have, but I look to y'all to give me those guidelines, I can only enforce the guidelines that are given to me, you know, y'all are the brains behind this whole thing, and I'm just your right hand, I guess, you know, but, I mean, as far, I've looked into it, and I've talked to the Health Department, I've talked to people at the state, and there's really nothing that can be done about it, I mean.
It's a natural resource.
It is, and I mean, we're eating more than ever, food's more disposable than it ever was, you know, and I just don't know the correct way of going about it, trying to make it right for both for the party involved and owning the chicken house and the community around them, I don't have that answer, but it is becoming a phone call I get about once a week, I will say that, and people's not happy, you know, specifically, you know, my grandma lives on Swan Road, and she, I mean, she gives me a ton of laughs every time I see her, and I try to tell her, you know, man, there's nothing I can do, and it's just one of them things, I mean, we can go down this road, and we've had the same thing with the RV parks and everything, I'm not saying we need more laws, but if the community is getting bent out of shape about it, then we might need to add to that conversation, but until then, there's really nothing I can do.
Thank you.
So, could we make a, so could we make a rule or whatever, I guess like with the junkyard deal, I think the way it goes, you have to petition the county if you want to put one in, correct?
I lean on Mr. Bell for all my advice on that, I really don't know the process.
What I understand, if you're in Arizona, and anywhere you stop and make it agriculture, they are allowed to come in, so any part of the county is to be zoned agriculture, they're rural areas, they would be zoned agriculture, and you can stop them, but then residential, you don't do agriculture in residential areas.
And if you don't mind, I'd like to bring up one point, even if we make rules moving forward, everything that's already in this county is grandfathered in, there's nothing we can do, they're basically untouchable by that rule that we've come up with, so really, if we're seeing it as a problem, the problem's already here, we can't get rid of it.
I've talked to multiple counties, and they've got the same issues, but they say there's nothing they can do.
So, when you say composting, there's no environmental limit, they're just piling them out on top of the ground?
I'm not saying there's not, if there is, it hasn't been brought to my attention, nobody I've asked has that answer, I'm sure that if you get, you know, the state involved, they might have something in stone, but then, once again, we ride, Warren County as a whole is pretty much independent when it comes to our environmental codes, our building codes, we even have our own fire marshal, so we start reaching out to the state, we can adapt what they got going on, but we would, I mean, I'm sure that this would have to be voted on by all of you guys, I don't think there's any limit, I mean, there might be, but not to my knowledge at this time, I can look further into that, and I'll get back to you on that, because that's actually a really good question, I never thought about it, but, you know, I worked in a chicken barn in North Carolina when I was younger, what's going on is, a lot of them chickens, they get stampeded, basically, if you walk through a chicken house and they empty them out, you'll see chickens that are basically pancaked on the floor, and they're taking them out of there before they put new chickens in there to prevent disease and stuff like that from happening, and they're piling them up, and I'm sure they're mixing with dirt or whatever their means are, but, you know, I'm not a chicken expert, so I don't know.
Mr. Bell.
I want to hear Ms. Wendy Smith's thoughts, because she used to work for the department I have.
There we go.
For how many years? Sixteen, so, of course, most of y'all are aware of my former position was business development for the TSC Department of Agriculture, for sixteen years, I worked in livestock supply chain and meat processing and food processing, so we did get a lot of calls pertaining to poultry farms across the state statewide, we did have some challenges in certain areas, I will say, there are certain things that are supposed to be done in a certain manner when it comes to composting, and that is an educational thing, so between UT Extension and TDEC, there are resources available for educational opportunities, so if we do have a challenge with certain farms, that's nothing to say that we can't call, there's a gentleman out of, that works for TDEC on Knoxville, that he is, we basically call him the composting guru, so he can tell you how to do it in a very efficient manner, you know, poultry, commercial poultry production is not what it was, you know, fifty and seventy years ago, so a lot of the time, you don't have a lot of the, or you shouldn't be having a lot of the odor that they used to, there's ways to do things in different manners to kind of hold that odor back unless, you know, you get like a really bad rainstorm or certain situations, like they're cleaning out the barns, so, but I would just suggest, like, I can get you names and contacts, and we can basically bring in, you know, educational people with, of course, with Heath's assistance at the UT Extension Office, since he is, you know, doing our ag for adults, so I would suggest getting with Heath, and then we can get with TDEC and get those people in there, and at least offering the education, they might have told they were exposed to compost, but they might not have been told how to compost, we run into situations like this also, with emergency management situations, when we have any type of alien influence or anything, so our state best office has been very good at setting up training exercises to help counties be prepared and ready with what to do and how to do it, and so it's no problem to transition those resources to situations like this.
I think one way we might look at, it's already started, when you sell your land, if you put on a little chicken house, that would slowly slow them down and turn them back, but that's just something we look at, if anybody sells their land, they want the top dollar, but put that owner, that could help us.
And a lot of people, I will just go ahead and say, a lot of people, when they look at, you know, you've got so many commercial poultry companies in our state, so we're the number one genetic raiser in the state, a lot of people don't realize it, the majority of genetic poultry companies that are raising the grandparent birds are located in Tennessee more than anywhere else in the world, and then we're shipping those genetics out, so that is a huge economic driver in the state, and when you look at commercial poultry production, the people that own those farms are not what you, like people try to say, industrial ag, but they aren't, they are individual farms and individual families that own the farms that are taking care of those chickens for the corporation, so it does have an effect on your local family farms, it comes down to that, but we can definitely offer, find resources and offer those for anybody needing them.
Appreciate it, thank you. All right, we got a motion, the second, all in favor, approval of the Code's reports, say aye. All opposed, as you know, we'll move on to our committee reports, uh, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, we don't have anything to report at this time.
All right, Billie Brown.
All things, Billie Brown, we've got the security systems in at the mall, and they've started delivering materials for the roof, we're hoping they'll get started on it next week or so.
My name is Chris, I got the notice today, Mr. Kelly, you have a more big one for Grant, we've got him.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, we have received three out of the four AOC grants for our courtroom security and safety upgrades to our courtrooms, so it's a good thing for the county, it won't cost taxpayers any money, and it'll be on our docket next month, so thank you.
Move on to economic act cost development.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, at this time, I'd like to introduce Wendy Smith, she has a report on a grant that we need to talk about.
I will be giving my full report, a full activity report, next month, that we did, I spoke with Executive Bell, we did want to kind of give you an update, the site development grant that we collaborated on, it was a hundred thousand dollars for master planning at the ELO property, they, ECD received fifty-five million dollars in grants, they have a thirty-seven or thirty-five million dollar budget, it's the first time they've ever received more requests that they had money, so, out of the two grants, or the one that IDB submitted on construction was not forwarded through to community presentations, but the ELO master planning grant was, so we found out the very end of November, and then after discussions, myself and one of our contacts with the Development District, and the engineering firm that we were working with, went to ECD and presented that day, we feel the presentation went very well, we should know, hopefully, by the end of the year, whether we are one of the communities chosen for that grant, so we'll definitely know for next meeting in January, hopefully, but we just want to give you an update on where we were standing in that process, that we had made it through to round two, thank you.
We move on to education, Miss Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, we had our monthly meeting, December eleventh, Eastside School, and we saw their updates and upgrades, and the highlight of our meeting was that Ms. Parley Brown was able to attend, and we're just happy to see you here tonight.
We move on to financial management, at this time, financial management has nothing to report, so we'll move on to health and welfare.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, we don't have anything to announce except that we are planning on starting construction hopefully next month.
Highway and bridge?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, we don't have anything to report on at this time, thank you. Wait, I do have one thing, January the ninth, the highway and bridge meeting, we will have a conjunction meeting with the planning commission, and it's going to be right here at four o'clock, thank you.
Policy personnel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, policy and personnel met on December eleventh, we got reports from the Code's Director and the Judicial Commissioner Chairman, and we also discussed the clinic, and one thing I'd like to point out about our Code's Director, I think he's already there, but he does a thorough job on everything, and I called contractors, and he worked with them, and they say he's good, but he stood and worked with it, but he did have a good report, anybody looked at it, and- And, and they say he stood, but he, he stood and worked with it. But he did have a, a good report. Anybody looked at it. And Commissioner Frager has some questions about the ones that, the environmental issues. He'll look on the back of his report. He had a list of the ones that are going to court. Thank you.
We'll now follow the second.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, we have just a report. We're a little about to announce our first Monday night meeting of the month. It won't be the first, this, in January, that's expected the eighth, if you have a chance to get over the call.
Uh, county direction partnership?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, today's population for the jail is two hundred and ten, which is, uh, down considerably. Uh, a hundred and fifty-nine of those are male, fifty-one female, nine of them are TDOC, uh, six male TDOC and three female TDOC. Uh, we did, uh, end up canceling our meeting this last month because of the death, uh, with the Spencer Price family. So, let's keep the, uh, that family in our prayers. Um, uh, but, uh, we will reschedule the state to come back in. Bob asked them in January, so we'll be looking for that meeting. Uh, to update a few things, uh, we've got septic tank in the, uh, we've got approval for septic tank in the classroom trailer, so that's coming in. Uh, so we're excited about, uh, getting the floors and the windows and getting a lot of work done in there. So, hopefully, uh, here soon we'll be, uh, utilizing that classroom, uh, out of the trailers. Um, the command center trailer, it, it showed up today. Uh, so we've got a few things to outfit it. So, hopefully, uh, if anything happens, we'll be able to utilize that. We do have full certification for the jail, so we're excited about that. Uh, congratulations to Jackie and his staff for all the hard work they do because, uh, full certification is, is a good thing for us. Uh, hopefully, we'll get the armory, uh, first part of the year. Once we get that, we're going to start on that carpentry class, uh, building. Uh, and so I think we're still discussing some of, some of the places that we're going to end up putting that on property. We did get the sixty-four thousand dollar grant, uh, for the, uh, radios and winded tent stuff for the, uh, um, courtroom, like, uh, Scott Kelly was talking about. Uh, police presence in our community, uh, we appreciate everything that they're doing. But, uh, you know, shop with a cop, a parade and the Fairfield Village and stuff, it's a great presence. And I think it's a good PR thing. We appreciate Jackie and everything that they're doing, uh, for that presence in, uh, in our community. And that's all I have to report at this time.
Uh, legislative committee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have nothing to report at this time.
All right. We move on to item number ten. Do we have anybody sign up for public comments on this yet? All right. We move on to item number ten. Uh, Mr. Scott, move.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is, uh, number one in the packet. And this is the one that I said we had a replacement for. It was a coding error. The numbers have not changed as far as the monetary values have not changed. And this is to establish line out of a three-star grant. And the intent is to purchase a sign for a three-star mall. There's not been a clear decision as to what kind of the sign. But that's the, the only thing that, that we lack. Uh, this passed both budget committees unanimously and I so move.
Motion, Mr. Second, Mr. Todd. Any questions about this budget? All right, I'll ask for Carl Rupp.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl Bolden?
Yes.
Carly Brown?
Yes.
Charles Dodson?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Steve Lynn?
Yes.
Stephen Hilton?
Yes.
Brad Gillis?
Yes.
James Hines?
Yes.
Scott Kelly?
Yes.
Rod Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Kenny Moffitt?
Yes.
Cam Montgomery?
Yes.
Gary Frager?
Yes.
Chris Reapy?
Yes.
Kristy Ross?
Yes.
Scott Rootley?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Donna Smith?
Yes.
Philip Stow?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Lane Wiltshire?
Yes.
Anyone want to change their vote? Twenty-three minutes.
Item number twenty-three to zero. We move on to item number two. Mr. Scott, move.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is amendment GFFY twenty-three, twenty-four dash twenty-two. Uh, the court system is running short on interpreter fees. And, but there have not been a lot of jury trials as of recent. So, they do have enough money in, uh, jury and witness expenses. And they have asked to move three thousand dollars from that to other contracted services. And that will be to fund the interpreters. Uh, it passed its respective committees unanimously and I so move.
Motion, Mr. Todd. Second, Mr. Savage. Any discussion about the amendment? No discussion. I'll ask for Carl Rupp.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl Bolden?
Yes.
Carly Brown?
Yes.
Charles Dodson?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Steve Lynn?
Yes.
Stephen Hilton?
Yes.
Brad Gillis?
Yes.
James Hines?
Yes.
Scott Kelly?
Yes.
Rod Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Kenny Moffitt?
Yes.
Cam Montgomery?
Yes.
Gary Frager?
Yes.
Chris Reapy?
Yes.
Kristy Ross?
Yes.
Scott Rootley?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Donna Smith?
Yes.
Philip Stow?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Lane Wiltshire?
Yes.
Anyone want to change their vote? Twenty-three minutes.
Item number two passes twenty-three to zero. We move on to item number three. Mr. Todd.
Uh, this is the third amendment for the general purpose schools. Uh, it is to establish, uh, the line of the state special education preschool grant.
Motion, Mr. Stow. Second, Mr. Dodson. Any questions about this amendment? Any no questions, I'll ask for Carl Rupp.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl Bolden?
Yes.
Carly Brown?
Yes.
Charles Dodson?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Steve Lynn?
Yes.
Stephen Hilton?
Yes.
Brad Gillis?
Yes.
James Hines?
Yes.
Scott Kelly?
Yes.
Rod Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Kenny Moffitt?
Yes.
Cam Montgomery?
Yes.
Gary Frager?
Yes.
Chris Reapy?
Yes.
Kristy Ross?
Yes.
Scott Rootley?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Donna Smith?
Yes.
Philip Stow?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Lane Wiltshire?
Yes.
Anyone want to change their vote? Twenty-three minutes.
Item number three passes twenty-three to zero. Uh, item number four, Mr. Todd.
This is the fourth amendment for the general purpose school system. Uh, this one is to re- reallocate funds within the, uh, multi-year grant budget for the innovative school model grant.
Motion, Mr. Todd. Motion, Mr. Bell. Second, Mr. Wiltshire. Any questions about this grant? Being none, I'll ask for Carl Rupp.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl Bolden?
Yes.
Carly Brown?
Yes.
Charles Dodson?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Steve Lynn?
Yes.
Stephen Hilton?
Yes.
Brad Gillis?
Yes.
James Hines?
Yes.
Scott Kelly?
Yes.
Rod Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Kenny Moffitt?
Yes.
Cam Montgomery?
Yes.
Gary Frager?
Yes.
Chris Reapy?
Yes.
Kristy Ross?
Yes.
Scott Rootley?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Donna Smith?
Yes.
Philip Stow?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Lane Wiltshire?
Yes.
Anyone want to change their vote? Twenty-three minutes.
Item number four passes twenty-three to zero. We'll move on to item number five.
This is a contract for three years, uh, between Warren County Schools and Lake. Uh, it is, I'm saying it's a scripture-based professional service.
Uh, Mr. Stow, second, Mr. Gillian. Any questions about the contract? Any no questions, I'll ask for Carl Rupp.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl Bolden?
Yes.
Carly Brown?
Yes.
Charles Dodson?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Steve Lynn?
Yes.
Stephen Hilton?
Yes.
Brad Gillis?
Yes.
James Hines?
Yes.
Scott Kelly?
Yes.
Rod Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Kenny Moffitt?
Yes.
Cam Montgomery?
Yes.
Gary Frager?
Yes.
Chris Reapy?
Yes.
Kristy Ross?
Yes.
Scott Rootley?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Donna Smith?
Yes.
Philip Stow?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Lane Wiltshire?
Yes.
Anyone want to change their vote?
All right. Item five passes twenty-three to zero. Item six is a master service agreement between Warren County Airport and Sandac. It's a five-year contract. And the county is currently in a contract, a sand attack right now. So, we hope financial management recommends it might be re- recorded, the contract. I hear a motion.
Motion.
Very much, Mr. Todd. Second, Mr. Dodson. Any questions? Being none, I'll ask for Carl Rupp.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl Bolden?
Yes.
Carly Brown?
Yes.
Charles Dodson?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Steve Lynn?
Yes.
Stephen Hilton?
Yes.
Brad Gillis?
Yes.
James Hines?
Yes.
Scott Kelly?
Yes.
Rod Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Kenny Moffitt?
Yes.
Cam Montgomery?
Yes.
Gary Frager?
Yes.
Chris Reapy?
Yes.
Kristy Ross?
Yes.
Scott Rootley?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Donna Smith?
Yes.
Philip Stow?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Lane Wiltshire?
Yes.
Anyone want to change their vote? Twenty-three minutes.
Item number six passes twenty-three to zero. Item number seven, Mr. Todd.
This is a contract with the Warren County Health Department and Syracuse. It will expire on July twenty, uh, July thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. This is for interpretation and language services for the health department.
Motion, Mr. Wiltshire. Will you approve? Second, Mr. Gillian. You may have any questions about the contract? Any no questions, I'll ask for Carl Rupp.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl Bolden?
Yes.
Carly Brown?
Yes.
Charles Dodson?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Steve Lynn?
Yes.
Stephen Hilton?
Yes.
Brad Gillis?
Yes.
James Hines?
Yes.
Scott Kelly?
Yes.
Rod Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Kenny Moffitt?
Yes.
Cam Montgomery?
Yes.
Gary Frager?
Yes.
Chris Reapy?
Yes.
Kristy Ross?
Yes.
Scott Rootley?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Donna Smith?
Yes.
Philip Stow?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Lane Wiltshire?
Yes.
Anyone want to change their vote? Twenty-three minutes.
Item number seven passes twenty-three to zero. We'll move on to item number eight. Mr. Brad Hill.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Number eight is the appointment to the Ag Extension Committee of Mr. Carl Bolden and Ms. Ginger Wanamaker. This is the reappointment. This will be the, both of them's third and final term. And this came through Ag Extension and Economic and Ag both unanimously. And I put this in formal motion.
All right. Motion, Mr. Gillis. Second, Mr. Bell. Any questions about the appointments? Not all those in favor of the appointments, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Pass unanimously. We'll move on to item number nine now. Mr. Shane Hill.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this is nominations for our disciplinary review board. This is an internal thing for the Sheriff's Department. This list of nominations come from Jackie Matheny. This is mandated, uh, that we have this, uh, put into our records and have this committee in place. Uh, with this, uh, I make the motion that we accept Mark Martin, Kevin York, Christian Nopez, that Thomas, uh, Hunter Roland, Le- uh, Lisa Burks and Mary Von, Von Home. Um, and I so move.
I do a second, you got a second, Mr. Dodson? I'll ask for Carl Rupp.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl Bolden?
Yes.
Carly Brown?
Yes.
Charles Dodson?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Steve Lynn?
Yes.
Stephen Hilton?
Yes.
Brad Gillis?
Yes.
James Hines?
Yes.
Scott Kelly?
Yes.
Rod Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Kenny Moffitt?
Yes.
Cam Montgomery?
Yes.
Gary Frager?
Yes.
Chris Reapy?
Yes.
Kristy Ross?
Yes.
Scott Rootley?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Donna Smith?
Yes.
Philip Stow?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Lane Wiltshire?
Yes.
Anyone want to change their vote? Twenty-three minutes.
Item nine passes twenty-three to zero. Item number ten, there's resolution twenty, twenty-three. It's a resolution to apply to the Department of Economic Community Development for a Connected Community Facilities Program. I filled out a grant to partner with the Health Department to develop some of the, uh, space, extra space that we're going to have. And this is a competitive grant. We may get it, we may not. We build out for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to have a big community room. Where we can have big meetings. Uh, there'd be like an internet cafe in there and another conference room. And some telehealth computers. We're thinking to telehealth. All this is in conjunction with our health department. So, we require a ten percent management. Like I say, we build out for seven hundred and fifty thousand.
Most approved.
Most agreed, Mr. Shane Hill. Second, Mr. Todd. This is fifty thousand finance, financial management is about, I should announce. So, if they have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I think it depended on the county court to pass this before the grant could move forward, too.
Yeah, that's why you have a different grant package. Anybody else have any questions? Being none, I'll ask for Carl Rupp.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl Bolden?
Yes.
Carly Brown?
Yes.
Charles Dodson?
Yes.
Randy England? Randy England?
Yes.
Steve Quinn?
Yes.
Stephen Hilton?
Yes.
Brad Gillis?
Yes.
James Hines?
Yes.
Scott Kelly?
Yes.
Rod Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Kenny Moffitt?
Yes.
Cam Montgomery?
Yes.
Gary Fraser?
Yes.
Chris Rippey?
Yes.
Christie Ross?
Yes.
Scott Rootley?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Donna Smith?
Yes.
Philip Stoudt?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Anyone want to change their vote?
Resolution number ten passes twenty-twoy-three passes twenty-three to zero. We'll move on to item number eleven. Mr. Kellian.
This is Liz Penobries. Ashley Cook. Carol Kite. Crystal Bill Ray. Virginia P. Dibby. David W. Martin. Trace Travis J. Powers. Matthew Rains. Lucy Sheehan. Inbert Griffin.
Motion to adjourn. All those who favor or approve the numbers say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Pardon us. We move on to item number eleven announcements. We've got to ask this, not to go right forward. If you've got any questions, you can ask it to Paul Scher, our representative. Just here, Paul Scher, address the board. If he's got anything he wants to tell us.
Thank you, Chairman Vale and the committee here today. I appreciate the opportunity to be here. We're here to try to represent you from the state of Tennessee. And we are open to any questions that you may have that you'd like to ask for us tonight. And we'll try to address them the best we can.
Anybody have any?
Mr. Scher, I don't want to be the dead horse today, but there are several members of my community here. And I would ask them to stand up. Will you see we got a representation of them? These are concerned citizens over the chicken houses and stuff. Every one of these, I've got the footage how far they live from it. And I don't know who measured it, but Christopher, he's closer than I am to it. But it is, it's overwhelming the state of Florida. I will say that University of Tennessee has been contacted. And Tyson and U2 Representative came out. They're trying to take care of the problem a little better. If we continue to smell it, we're supposed to make another report. And supposedly, it doesn't smell as bad as chicken houses used to. But it still stinks no matter what. But this is not a manure smell that we smell. It's dead compost and animals. It smells like there are a thousand dead giant rats in my front yard. Let's have some of it. It's huge. It really is. Although I can deal with that, I'm a farmer. My cows don't always smell good either. My sheep don't smell good all the time. But there's one gentleman here that he has a business that's probably fifteen hundred feet from Wesley Morgan. Says thirty-two hundred feet, but he has a wedding venue. Now, there's sixteen chicken, sixteen chicken houses across the road from him. He's got a wedding venue. It's a ninety-five degree date in August. And they just cleaned the chicken houses out. What's that going to do to that man's business that was there first? But I know that agriculture can't be regulated. But is there absolutely anything that can be done? I know that they said we could be a town, we could be a city, and a city can make their own rules and come up with moratoriums and stuff. But Center Town has that, and they have chicken houses right outside the city limits. I'm just saying this because these folks want to know if there's anything they can do. They feel like it's hurt their property value. And it's hurt this one man's business for sure. And I will say, Christopher, he's probably two thousand feet from it. I know it's pretty bad at his house. I'm actually on the side that if the wind's stirring, it's not as bad on me as it is on these other folks. They wanted to speak tonight, but according to the way the rules were set up, this was not on the docket. So they weren't able to. But they had an opportunity to speak to you before, and I'm sure they can after. But can you give them any assurance of anything they might can do?
Well, to my understanding from the state of Tennessee, you are allowed to have these. It'd be just like having a dairy farm. Or if you had a pig farm in the county. Now, if you was in the city where there's regulations in the city, something probably, you know, could be done. But in the county, to my understanding, there's not. Now, I would say this, if they are dead chickens laying out where they shouldn't be laying out and they're stinking, I believe that something could be done about that from the state, as far as the smell, if they are in. And here is what the lady here spoke about earlier and what was something said. If there's some dead chickens laying out there, I don't think that should happen like that. And I believe there's somebody from the state could probably do something about that. But far as the smell, I don't know of anything that can be done about the smell. Maybe to be sad to say to you folks about that. And I know your property is very valuable. And if there is something from the state, I don't know what it is, but I'll be glad to try to check further to try to see if anything could be done. But I don't know of anything at this time.
One of, like, one of them asked me this question that I asked. And it's funny, because when Wendy was talking, she referred to it as industrial chicken raising.
I said it is not. That's what a lot of people call it.
When I was, when I questioned about this, the, from what I understand, there's no such thing as commercial agriculture. There is no such thing, no matter how big or how large, if a corporation owned it or if it's a family farm, there is no commercial agriculture. And she spoke, maybe we can talk to Wendy more. We forgot that she was one of the people that was helping bring these things into the state.
I don't want all the lobs off except Paul.
But anyway, but anyway, just, they spoke to me and asked if you could have them. Anyway, I very much appreciate it.
Yeah. And I'll be glad to, after the meeting's over, I'll be glad to try to talk with them and see if whatever. But I would say, if there is a dead chicken laying outside openly, I would say something could be done about that. I don't think that should be allowed to happen. Chicken manure, you know, of course, we're having some issues where people's scattering the chicken manure on people's fields and getting a smell there. As far as I know, we can't do anything about that because I know I'm having some people call me even from Grundy County now that I don't even represent, where Chattanooga's bringing their human waste is, Tommy's talked about, where people's bringing human waste from Chattanooga, scattering it on fields and smelling it. So to my understanding, there's nothing could be done about that. But I would say about the dead chickens, I would say something could be possibly done about them. And I'll be glad to talk to them.
Manure smell leaves after a short period of time.
Right.
But the problem we're having right now is this deteriorating flesh smell stays. And that's what, so that's what we need to work at, is just getting rid of that. I've been assured by multiple people that the chicken houses don't smell as bad as they used to. But so far, ours does.
Mr. Scher?
Yes, sir.
We had the same problem in Marsin several years back. And what they did to eliminate salmon dander was they froze the dead chickens. And then the truck, a truck would come from Shettville and pick them up and do the burning over there.
Okay.
And I don't know whether they're still doing that or not, but they would freeze them. And they'd come around and pick them up about once a week.
So they don't burn them at that facility?
They had, they quit burning them as far as I know. Okay, they don't burn anymore over there now.
So they probably don't burn any of the chickens that's put out back there. Do y'all have any knowledge of that?
But they put, they put a big freezer in over there just for that.
Yeah.
Oh, well, no. Mr. Lathan Lattick, at that particular time, owned the businesses. And he also owned the equipment company that set up the chicken houses. He was just raising chickens for Tyson.
I know your co-person that was talking earlier here about, you know, when he's working at some chicken houses where chickens do get killed and stomped over and flattened and all that. I know there's got to be a procedure that they have to make sure that that's took care of in a proper manner, I would think, from the state.
Maybe that's our situation, it's not been followed, but Wendy has.
So, of course, one of the options with composting and other is incineration. And so I've reached out to a contact of mine. And years past, USDA and others has had some type of grant programs to help local producers purchase incinerators to do away with that, you know, to make it a fast process to order it's over. So I'll see what they say, if they can give me information. If not, you know, that might be something, any of the state grant funds available, which one would it look at?
Yes, one of the things that we was talking about, the human waste, was they were piling it up. And then it was raining and the water was running off. Even with the chicken litter, if it's piled up and it gets wet and saturated and the water starts running off and you're pouring it in the groundwater, that is illegal.
Yeah.
If I were you, I would contact T-DAC and get them to come up here and check that, which we've not had much rain. But last year in the wintertime, we had a lot of rain and that was, that was a big issue. But they, they do not want that runoff going into the groundwater. That's serious.
I have a simmer problem at my house. It comes and goes. And it's been going on for years and years, but I've only, I moved about a year ago. And I've called everybody from the EPA, I've called anybody and everybody that I can think of. And all I was ever told, it's a natural resource, they can't do nothing about it. A natural resource, just like the chickens, is a natural resource. When we, when we put incinerators to burn the dead chickens, if you think the smell you got now is bad, you wait till you start doing that. The feathers, when they start burning and everything, it's a terrible smell.
Yeah. So may I ask, I guess, these folks here, is T-DAC or anybody from T-DAC been up to any of the chicken houses that you know of?
We just see them and smell them.
Mr. Scher, I have one neighbor, I have one neighbor that rents the land between me and the chicken houses. And he has called the state EPA. And they've been up because of the runoff that comes. It actually comes across me too. When it rains, there's a driver ranch and it runs across this man's property and then it runs onto me. He's called EPA. And they, they've came in and they've told him some things he needs to do. But for whatever reason, they're walking on cotton.
So there's nothing running off into a stream that would be contaminating the stream that you don't?
Charles Creek, about three, four miles down the stream. Well, that's another story, right?
Yeah.
I spoke with the Health Department while that. And they advised me to call the non-emergency number. And we sent a deputy out there to check the smell. I haven't referred to help today to grade. I told them to tell them what it's bound to. So we'll, we'll do that some more. We'll check on that, because that worked pretty good.
And I will be glad to speak with these folks afterwards if they'll help, see what we can do to help them. If that's fair to y'all.
Anybody else have anything you want to ask Mr. Scher?
I would like to congratulate, congratulate Mr. Terry Vale on his recent award. For the ones that don't know, he went up to Gatlinburg, what, last week? Two weeks ago? And received an award for the work that he's been doing with the Senior Citizen, Senior Center and everything. So I want to congratulate him and represent our county in a well manner. And I greatly appreciate everything he's done.
Thank you.
We appreciate you coming down and letting our citizens address the issues.
And we'll try to help the best we can to help you out.
Thank you, Mr. Scher.
Thank you.
There's another thing you need to congratulate on. Terry's got another grant budget. Item sixty.
I want to thank Executive Vale and all those responsible for the delicious meal tonight. It was good.
I do have to thank my wife, Becky. Of course, you see her, she's the one that done most of the cooking allowed. And listen, Jason have two. Want to thank them, and I want to thank anybody that brought food here tonight. I really think we had a good meal. Good fellowship before. And I would also like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. I will entertain most of the journalists.
Mr. Chair?
Has somebody else got something?
Ms. Carleen, ready to address us?
Sorry, we're so proud that Ms. Carleen is here tonight. We're so proud.
I would like to just tell all of you how much I appreciate your prayers.